Good evening. It's 5:33 PM. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gio, do you have our land acknowledgement today?
Land acknowledgement. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan people in the Kowalitz tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. Okay, next up is to adopt tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
A move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
Director Bookenegre has moved and Director Wilson has seconded to approve tonight's agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My vote is aye. And the motion carries. We have our agenda. I just told my colleague here that I was having a very good day and the reason why is about to come into the room. The next item on the agenda is a performance. Dr. Maloney is Corinne Ormsen here to introduce the kids.
Yeah, she's standing there.
We are Mountain View High School's express ensemble and we will be singing "Christmas Time Is Here." We are so grateful for the opportunity to sing for you and we hope you enjoy.
(Music) Christmas time is here. Happiness and cheer. Fun for all that you do. Their favorite time of year. Slaves in the air. Carols everywhere. Old and tall and ancient. Of love and dreams to share. Slaves in the air. Beauty everywhere. Built high by the fireside. And joyful memories there. Christmas time is here. Christmas time is here. Families drawing near. Such spirit through the year. Slaves in the air. Beauty everywhere. Built high by the fireside. And joyful memories there. Christmas time is here. Christmas time is here. Families drawing near. Ooh. Such spirit through the year. All that we could always see. Such spirit through the year. Christmas time is here.
They don't have another one coming? Okay. No. Well, I just needed to know when to respond, you know? You've, I'm sure you've been in performances where the music has a pause and some silence and people start clapping and I was a little worried about that.
Yeah, they usually don't wait for us to say anything to just leave. They just want, they're nervous and they want out.
You guys were wonderful.
It's great.
Thank you so much. And your sweaters are awesome.
They're the best sweaters I've ever seen.
The snow globe is pretty spectacular.
You've heard that a lot today.
Your voices are beautiful.
They sure are. I was a high school choir kid and I still sing in a choir and I lead a choir and just, you know, from that kind of performer's perspective and stuff, you guys sound collegiate level. I love the chords, harmonies, and phrasing. Thank you so much for bringing yourselves into it and it's one of my favorite Christmas songs, too.
I think that was better than Charlie Brown's Christmas Special.
Thank you guys for taking time out of your evening and coming and singing for us. It's one of the highlights of what we get to do, so thank you guys very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You sounded wonderful.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation. Dr. Maloney is Chief Financial Officer Jacobson here?
Our presenter is not here.
Oh, our presenter is not here.
Our presenter is not here.
Oh.
Okay. So as soon as we get situated with the presentation up, we will have our Chief Financial Officer, Jennifer Jacobson, do an introduction for us.
Thank you.
This, no. I don't know where it is. She might be, I can't make it.
Well, I'll go ahead and introduce Josh from Habitat for Humanity, Evergreen. Correct.
Thanks.
Sorry about the confusion there. We had a change in presenters at the last minute.
No worries.
My name is Josh Townsley. I'm the CEO of Evergreen Habitat for Humanity here in Vancouver in the Greater Clark County area and we just have a short presentation for you tonight, but appreciate all of you welcoming Habitat to come and just give you a quick update about what's happening in our community with affordable housing for Habitat. Is this clicker here? Perfect, thank you. Okay, great. So Habitat has been in Clark County since 1991. We are one of about 1,000 affiliates across the country, but we are an independent affiliate here of our greater network that's all over the world. Habitat obviously has existed for a long time, about 40-plus years now, and we've always had the same vision, that we believe in a world where everyone deserves a decent place to live. And the Habitat of many years ago, even in the early 2000s for us, was the barn-raising model. It was all volunteer organization and we'd build one house per year and we were very excited about it. Things have changed a little bit. Even since I started 14 years ago, we had two staff and now I think we have 29 as of this year. So we're trying to do more and build more and serve more families. So we have kind of three main programs that we do. We have a home, affordable homeownership program where we're building homes as well as rehabbing homes here in the Clark County area. I'll talk more about that. We have a home repair model and we also have neighborhood revitalization. Our affordable homeownership model has changed over the years. We're still serving low-income families, but the reality is what affordable homeownership means today is very different than what it meant 20 years ago. 20 years ago, we were serving folks who were making minimum wage, sometimes working two or three times a job. We're still serving those families, but we're also seeing now that the median wage in our area is almost $100,000 or more. Somebody who makes, you know, $70,000 per year still can't afford to buy a house in this county. Housing costs have gone way up, rental costs have gone way up, so Habitat's doing our best to fill that gap for families from all spectrums, from 35%, so roughly, you know, $40,000 per year up to like $90,000 per year in income. So where we used to just serve those families who were working those blue-collar jobs, now you're seeing us also serving teachers, nurses, firefighters, folks who are making a really big difference in our community, but those dollars just aren't enough to buy a house on the market. We're still the same, that all of our homes are made affordable, so our families will never pay more than 35% of their income towards housing. That keeps us sustainable so they can also afford groceries and diapers and take their families out to dinner or to the movies and go on many vacations, whatever it is. Habitat's about providing strength and stability for those families. So one of our projects we've been doing recently, we actually purchased 42 homes. Many of those are in Evergreen School District area. We purchased them from the Vancouver Housing Authority and we're doing moderate rehabs on them, new cabinets, appliances, flooring, paint, and we're reselling those to future home buyers. So it's been really exciting. Those are kind of scattered, so I didn't bring a map of where those are, but many of those families reside in your district here. All of our homes now are part of what we call a community land trust model. So it used to be when you bought a house from Habitat for $60,000 in the mid-1990s, wouldn't that be amazing now? You know, you could sell that house 20 years later and find a lot of generational wealth from that. The problem we found is those $60,000 homes are now worth $400,000, $500,000, and when they sell, it means we're losing affordability in the community because that next family who buys it is making a lot more money to be able to afford it. So all of our homes we build right now and rehab are permanently affordable. So that family is still seeing some wealth increase, they're still seeing some appreciation, excuse me, but it's a much smaller amount than you see in the market. And when that home sells, whether it's in five years, 30 years, or 50 years, it has to be sold to another income-qualified family. So we're always keeping it affordable for generations to come. We also do the repair program I mentioned, that a lot of families in Clark County can't afford to stay in their home, whether it's because they need ADA accessibility, wheelchair ramps, bathrooms remodeled to have wheelchair accessibility for the shower, grab bars, or their roof is caving in and their insurance company won't insure them anymore, but they're living on social security or disability and they just don't have the $20,000 for a new roof. So Habitat comes in and works to keep those families in their home. And neighborhood revitalization. This is a great program. We're actually working in the fourth plane corridor right now, where we're working with those community residents and listening to them and hearing what they're inspired for in their community, working to improve their quality of life. It's harder to measure this in metrics of families served, but it's all about asset-based community development and working with them to provide safety, working with parks, working with school districts, working with advocacy organizations. So it's an amazing program we have going on there. We'll come back to the video if we have time at the end. I wanted to share just two developments here. So Johnson Village, we just finished. This is off 162nd. It's nine homes, 162nd and 33rd or so. 14 kids in these nine homes who are now part of the Evergreen School District, we're really excited for them. Families from all different backgrounds and walks of life and it's just been such a treat to see all those kids playing in the cul-de-sac, meeting new friends, having new moms and dads who are going to watch over them during the afternoon or whatever it is, and coming together and building that community. So we just finished there and now we're moving down the street to 132nd Avenue. And this will be our largest project to date. It's actually 32 homes, 32 cottages. We're starting infrastructure here in the middle of winter, which is the absolute wrong time to do it, but we're pushing forward. Hopefully, home construction starts in the summer. This is what it looks like. In the cottage cluster model is you actually have these green spaces in the middle with homes surrounding it. So the parking is all centralized and then the residents have like a common area together. What it looks like in actual models is like this. So we're really excited about this. These are smaller homes, they're two-bedroom starter homes, could be up to 64 more kids who will be part of your school district here in the future and just building a new community. I think there's a couple more pictures of what this looks like. So we're excited for this. We'll build this out over two years and just excited to see these kids have a more stable and safe future here in the county. I think there's just a couple slides here of what the homes look like. So that is what Habitat is up to here. We're excited. You know, we have a long history of partnering with Evergreen School District for many years. I think seven or eight years, we were part of the Geometry and Construction Program with Evergreen High School and Bill Culver over there. We're exploring partnerships right now with Cascadia Tech and hope to be working with them over our next school year as well. And we're excited to bring this new development to you and bring you some new families. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Do we have time for the video?
I think we have time for the video.
Great. It's like a three-minute video just about some Habitat families sharing what home means to them. If we have sound.
Maybe pause the video while they...
...to homelessness.
Always thought about wanting to be a homeowner and never...
Why did I apply for a Habitat house?
We are a big family of six and our home at the time was tiny, only 720 square feet.
Our family was kind of split, but that was all because we couldn't find a place for all of us to live.
Rents were going up so high all the time. I don't know, I just kept feeling like we were edging closer and closer to homelessness.
I always thought about wanting to be a homeowner and never thought I would be able to be one. I did finally qualify and it's just been an amazing process.
Surprisingly enough, we were accepted. And it was really exciting. We were really surprised.
Shocked.
She cried for a minute and I was, I felt great.
The hope I had was actually becoming a reality. That's exactly what Habitat for Humanity is. It's hope.
I wanted to introduce you to David and Shelley, who are our future Habitat homeowners.
We were so blown away with the program, how it works, how it's not a handout, it is a hand up.
By the end, all our muscles were really, really tired and we could barely hold a hammer, but we got it up, we got every single nail in.
They had to do 500 hours between them, juggling full-time jobs, schools, all the other issues that come up. And that's the kind of dedication our family pays back to the program.
We congratulate you and welcome you home.
Now we have a beautiful three-bedroom, two-full-bath house.
We've been living in our house for almost five years this month and I just can't believe that...
I don't ever have to worry about rising rent prices ever again.
I have the pride of homeownership now and an overall sense of well-being. I'm so happy I applied for a Habitat home. It has changed mine and my family's lives in so many good ways.
You know, this is like a home for us.
No matter who we are, or where we come from, or what our story is, we all deserve to know we have the power to take care of ourselves and build our own futures. At Evergreen Habitat for Humanity, our shared vision is a world where everyone has a decent place to live.
Because you, me, we, we're all humans and every single one of us deserves the opportunity for a better future.
Thank you to God, to the community, and to the people who chose our family, and to Evergreen Habitat for Humanity for letting us be a part of the amazing Habitat family.
I really cannot even say thank you enough to everybody who helped us get this.
Couldn't be happier and I couldn't have done this without my great family.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Will you join us at Evergreen Habitat for Humanity in bringing home to more families?
Any questions I can answer?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say I really like that design where it's everybody, the community's in the center. It really feels one safe and it just, I don't know, just the feeling of bringing neighborhoods together.
Yeah, we're really excited for the model. Yeah. It's one of the first cottage cluster projects built in the Vancouver area, so it'll be fun.
It really looks nice. I know my kids and most of their peers are not interested in suburban life, quite in that way, but this is, so this is a good change. I'm really looking forward to seeing that and maybe if you give us some information about volunteering, maybe volunteering a little for...
Yeah, absolutely.
I could ask you about that first, the Johnson Village, is that northeast or southeast 33rd?
Northeast, yeah.
I drive up and down 162nd every day, so I've watched it on the other side of the fence being built.
Yeah.
Because there's a white fence, like it's like...
Yeah, the city made us put a sound wall in, so you can't see it from 162nd now, but it's over there.
Is it to the west?
On the west side.
West side of 162nd, yeah.
I knew it was Habitat because you guys have your actual big sign on 162nd on the fence.
Oh, yeah, okay. Now I remember seeing it. Thank you. Thank you for that. I could ask you or I could ask Christine, who is their contact at Evergreen for collaborative work? And do you know?
For partnering with us?
Yeah.
Yeah, typically you'd email Heather, who was going to be here for the presentation tonight. She's our Director of Community Engagement, so she leads all of our volunteer programs.
I mean, who at Evergreen do you interface with?
Oh, at Evergreen High School, sorry. We have the same name.
At Evergreen's public schools?
Yeah, you know, it just depends. So we worked with Bill Culver for many years. Anita Jinks, who was one of your Assistant Directors of CTE, is now on our board. So she does a lot of the interaction back and forth, too, with some of her old colleagues. But, yeah.
And, okay. Yeah, those were my questions. Any other questions for him?
All right. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for presenting to us today.
Thank you.
Okay, the time has come. The next item on the agenda is public comments. We have six people signed up to speak. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask a speaker a clarifying question or follow-up at a later time on an issue raised during public comment. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes this evening. After, yeah, oh, there's six people, so that's about a half hour. Following, yeah. There is no mechanism whereby a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. No individual may speak more than once per regular meeting, even if there's time remaining, and please state your name and district affiliation, if any. The first person on our list is Juanito Washington. Ms. Washington, are you here? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening Superintendent Maloney, members of the board, and members of the community. I am a proud parent of a ninth-grade student at Hila High School and I am employed as a healthcare administrator. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about Hila High School and the significance of its mission and shaping in the future of our students and community. Named in honor of Henrietta Lacks, Hila High carries a legacy that demands reflection, action, and accountability. Henrietta Lacks' story is a powerful reminder of the ethical challenges and injustices within medicine. Her contributions to science and healthcare, though monumental, came at a great personal cost, one that stemmed from a failure of medical ethics. As we prepare our students for the future, we must ensure that they not only learn about this history, but are inspired to drive ethical, equitable change in their fields of interest. Currently, Hila High's mission statement is broad yet vague. Tonight, I propose that we refine it to reflect the importance of medical ethics, critical thinking, and action. In our society, we do not just need critical thinkers, we also need critical doers. Individuals who take their knowledge and pair it with a strong ethical foundation and create tangible change. The revised mission should focus on fostering excellence, inspiring integrity, and equipping students with the tools to address and close the gaps in medical and scientific disparities. We should be building a reputation for Hila High as a school that graduates leaders who not only excel academically, but also embody ethical responsibility and the determination to create a fairer and healthier world. Imagine the power of a school where students graduate not only understanding the historical significance of Henrietta Lacks' legacy, but also ready to carry it forward, armed with the knowledge, empathy, and skills it takes to make a difference. I ask the board to take this proposal into consideration to clarify and elevate Hila's High mission statement. Together, we can ensure that this school becomes a beacon of excellence, equity, and ethical action, and a legacy that Ms. Lacks would be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dr. Maloney, could I ask that, could I ask that follow-up take place with Ms. Washington and get some more information about...
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
The next person is Sheena Hardy. Ms. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello Superintendent Maloney and members of the board. My name is Sheena Hardy and I'm a proud mother of a junior at Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School, also known as Hila. I serve as the president of the Hila Families of African Descent Committee and vice president of the Hila Senior Boosters Club. While I understand the challenges that come with budget cuts, I must express my deep concern about how these cuts are gravely affecting the students at Hila High School. The school is extraordinary in theory, a place designed to prepare students for careers in health and biosciences while honoring the legacy of Henrietta Lacks, an African-American woman whose contributions have revolutionized medicine for all. But in practice, it feels like Hila often gets lost in the mix of other larger schools in the district. Hila is much smaller, yes, but our students deserve the same high school experiences and memories as their peers at larger schools. Unfortunately, our kids miss out on many of these opportunities and the lack of representation within the school only compounds these problems. At a school carrying the name of Henrietta Lacks, it is disheartening that beyond pictures on the walls, there is no staff member who looks like the students of color they serve. Representation matters. Research shows that students who see themselves reflected in their educators perform better academically, have higher self-esteem, and are more likely to pursue higher education. Families like mine are tired of voicing their concerns and seeing no meaningful action. We hear from our children about their struggles and feel frustrated when these concerns are met with inaction. Hila High School is a hidden gem, a school with incredible potential... Hila High School is a hidden gem, a school with incredible potential to serve not just the students, but the broader community. However, too few people know about it unless they happen to drive by or hear about it from someone else. The time is now to invest in this school, to make Hila the beacon it can and already should be, and to ensure our students receive the support, opportunities, representation they deserve, and the representation they deserve. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to take these concerns seriously for the benefit of our students and their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. The next person on our list is Angie Bundah. Angie? Ms. Bundah? I should be consistent. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Angie Bundah. I have two children in the school district. Tonight, I would like to thank you for all the recent engagement opportunities for parents and community members. I was able to attend the community conversation and the legislative presentation. It's been wonderful to see more open communication from the district. With two upcoming levies, it's more important than ever to continue rebuilding trust and support. There are people who will not move forward and vote yes until some concerning topics are acknowledged, explored, and finally addressed. Number one, with the loss of our elementary librarians this year, many people are asking how the library mitigation plan is going thus far. Pulling our academic interventionists away from the most vulnerable students who need extra resources and help to instead have them cover teacher planning periods, and library time is concerning. As a parent, we do not want this to fall through the cracks and go without any review or evaluation, only to learn at the end of the year that students are even more behind. Number two, the secret $34,000 supplemental contract from last year's district bargaining team. The fact that it was quickly dismissed without explanation created a huge break in the community's trust. There are still questions as to why the board was not involved in this decision, why the dates are outside of a regular pay cycle and didn't even go until the end of the strike, and why this contract was so secretive until a group of parents discovered and exposed it. I appreciate the suggestion for the board to discuss this during a meeting or workshop, and I hope that happens before February 11th. To ensure no other hidden uses of taxpayers' money happens, I am asking for the district to use open collective bargaining for the upcoming PSE negotiations next year and allow members of the public to silently sit and observe during all bargaining sessions, or record or livestream all meetings for the public to view. If the district truly bargains in good faith, they will have nothing to hide, and there is no reason to decline. Number three, many parents are concerned at their children's required IEP minutes and one-on-one time being missed. I spoke about this back in September. The community conversation revealed that there is a huge need for better help in understanding the basics of IEPs and providing resources and support to help parents advocate for their children. This is something we are trying to further discuss with the district, and I'm hopeful that we will find some new ideas and solutions together. In my October speech, I said silence does not foster support, and it's time to start talking and address these concerns. We all want these levies to pass. Pointing out the holes in the boat and then working together to patch them up will ensure a higher chance of success. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person is Camille Lohman.
Good evening. There's a computer up with the screen. I don't know if that, is that fine? Okay. My name is Camille. I have a child in early elementary, as well as two bonus kiddos at a late start elementary, one in middle and one in high school. Now, I've spent my career in marketing communications with experience supporting clients through building and maintaining their websites. And trying to navigate the four different school-specific websites and the district website feels next to impossible. And I know I'm not alone in this. I don't think I go a day without mention of it from a parent or a staff member, and even journalists who I've spoken with. The drop-down menu on the homepage of the district website, you have to scroll to get down to all the information, and that completely defeats the purpose and is almost impossible on mobile. The Envision Evergreen page only has updates for the brand-new school buildings, nothing else, yet there are things posted on Facebook all the time of other updates being done around the district using bond money. And in a time when there has been constant feedback regarding concerns for how tax dollars are being spent, the updates and the impact of what the bond has paid for, how much of the funds are left, and what the remaining funds will be used for would be an especially useful way to communicate district priorities and the reality of the funding available, and an opportunity for further education surrounding bonds versus levies. And while I'm sure the district is already beginning to map out the communication plan for the levy, when it is next to impossible to effectively or efficiently locate even the simple, everyday information that you're looking for, it makes it very difficult as a stakeholder to understand the specific reasons about why these local tax dollars should even support Evergreen public schools. The district made a choice last year to allocate over $33,000 to compensate for individuals who are already making over $200,000 each, and the majority of the board has chosen to defend this decision while the website remains an ineffective mode of communication. Radios are broken at many of the schools, which is a safety hazard, and my hope is that the board will choose to make a decision with leadership moving forward that is in the best interest of the students, staff, and stakeholders, focusing on communication and transparency.
Thank you, Ms. Lohman. Next person on the list is Dr. Raina Strong. Dr. Strong?
Hello, my name is Raina Strong. I am a school dentist for the Evergreen School District and also surrounding districts such as Vancouver. Just shot down here from Centralia today, finished saving a tooth on a nine-year-old girl who probably would have needed to get her adult molar removed, another one I had to refer out, unfortunately. But this is the gist of what I would like to share today. A lot of families and even staff members are not aware of the resource that's available to them right now. The program has only existed since last year, so we're still trying to get it up and running. But we've actually had less participation this year than we did last year. And the major barrier, unfortunately, is school staff, who feel too overwhelmed to engage with the program. All we need from them is facilitation and a space. So, putting all of our minds and hands and hearts together, this is certainly not impossible. Many schools are generating lists as many as 60 kids, some can't get more than three, some decline to participate whatsoever. I think this is really unacceptable, because a lot of the families are just not aware. So if we are not offering this to them, and they're not aware of it, that's a very big in-service. I see better advertising for spirit wear, school photos, movie nights, than I do this basic need that would really support both our kids, families, and their education. So whatever you can do to partner with the schools, with the staff, to get the word out to the family, this is not another typical school program where we're doing screenings and kicking them out. We're doing full service. I'm taking x-rays, I'm doing fillings, I'm removing infected teeth, I'm getting kids out of pain. And instead of leaving school, they leave class for like an hour, and they go right back. If they're unable to cooperate, which a lot of parents find their kids are, when they get all the way to the dentist and have taken a whole day off of work, we send them right back to class. That's totally fine. That's no problem. And it's no problem for the parent either, because they tried, they did their best, we give them lots of love and praise anyway, and then they can go take them to another dentist and know that it's going to be challenging, and they can be prepared for that. So it's saving the school time, less hours of school missed, less hours of work missed, getting comprehensive care, and a basic healthcare need met. I think that's about all I have to say about it, for the most part. I know that some of you have my email. I've tried to contact a lot of administrators. I'm going to keep at it. I'm also talking to the Senate in a couple of days to advocate for our kids. So let's work together on this and get this resource out to families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Good evening. Sean Gunder, I am a, I'm Sean Gunder. I'm a teacher at Henrietta Lacks. I'm speaking to you tonight as an individual related to calendar concerns. You know, I just had to decide, should this go in the agenda item for the 25-26 calendar? But I think that this goes beyond that, so I'm choosing to speak now. I want to say first off, it was a little bit discouraging to have, you know, a thankfulness activity happening during workshop last time and have thankfulness, like, go out through district communication, leading up to the Thanksgiving holiday, particularly for the purpose that I'm here talking to you all about and the history behind Thanksgiving. The, what we think of as the first Thanksgiving, what we're taught as kids as the first Thanksgiving was essentially a harvest festival, and the Plymouth Colony colonists were celebrating their survival, and the Wampanoag people happened to attend, and the Wampanoag people were allied with the Plymouth colonists because they had previously been decimated due to disease that was brought previously by trappers to the, what is now the United States. And so they allied for that purpose. Sorry, this is not very well, this is not rehearsed or written down, but the, what we think of like, you know, there was, so that was what we think of as the first Thanksgiving. There was a second Thanksgiving that was actually, was actually known as a Thanksgiving. The third Thanksgiving was declared by the governor of the Massachusetts Bay Colony following the barricading and burning of the Pequot Village that killed 400 to 700 men, women, and children, down to the person. Anyone that was trying to escape, they shot, and I think five got away and imprisoned them. That was the end of the Pequot tribe, until they were federally recognized in the 20th century. The story of Thanksgiving, when we think about what we are celebrating during Thanksgiving, we cannot extricate it from the history of that one of land theft, one of genocide. And when we celebrate Thanksgiving as a public institution, like, you know, despite the land acknowledgements that we might give and despite our statements of equity, that is something that's ingrained within that. So I found it discouraging, I find it discouraging. I personally don't observe Thanksgiving, and that's a personal choice. I know that that's not a privilege available to everybody. A way through, I would propose a fall break. Everyone take a week off. Some people can celebrate Thanksgiving during that week, but we don't have to label it as a Thanksgiving holiday. Let's just have a fall break. Next time we have a calendar revision, 26-27, and then we can, you know, reconcile some of that cognitive dissonance that maybe exists there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And so, this concludes the public comment portion of the meeting. The next item on the agenda is our board's reorganization. Where we're going to vote for president, vice president, and legislative representative. So the first item there are nominations for president for the next calendar year. Are there any nominations?
Well, I would like to nominate Jackie Weatherspoon as the board chair and keep to our board agreements that we made that we would rotate officers, and it would make sense, because she was vice chair this year.
Second.
Director Weatherspoon, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for president? Hearing none, is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none of that, all those in favor of Jackie Weatherspoon becoming president of the board for the next year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one's opposed. And it's done. Madam President, the gavel is yours.
Next item is, I will take a nomination for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Ginny Gronwald for the position of vice president.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Accept the nomination.
Hearing no other nominations, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You are now vice president. Let's see, and... Now we'll move on to a motion to elect a legislative representative. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Rob Perkins for the legislative rep position.
I accept the nomination.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
Sorry. Nomination by Director Gronwald, and seconded by Director Boconegra. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is board consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the board's consent agenda as presented.
Director Gronwald. Director Gronwald motioned, and it was seconded by Director Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent consent agenda.
I move the adoption of the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Director Perkins moved to approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented and seconded by Director Boconegra. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is our superintendent report. Dr. Maloney.
Now, we had some speakers this evening talking about Henrietta Lacks High School, and I had the opportunity to visit Henrietta Lacks not too long ago for the celebration of life for Henrietta Lacks. And it was amazing, I understand it was the first time that this event has occurred. It was developed by, and Gio, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I got wrong information, by some of the English teachers there, assignments, and students represented Henrietta Lacks' life and her contributions and her legacy through a variety of different, whether it's artwork, whether it was computer-generated presentations, it was paintings, it was timelines that reflected the different events through her life and the legacy she left behind. And then I think there was also poems and personal essays around her life and legacy. And so it was an amazing event. I was there, and students were, everything was on display, and students were allowed out of class for a specific timeframe, came down, and were able to view all of the other students' projects and presentations. And of course, there was cake as well. So, and I know you took full advantage of that, right? Yes. So that is, it was a, you know, again, a first for this, for a tradition that I know is going to continue. So it was great work from, for the staff and students at Henrietta Lacks High School. It's been very busy, okay? So we've had a WADA conference, Thanksgiving, and the first full week of December have already occurred, and here we are, December 10th. I had the opportunity to host OSPA Assistant Superintendent Dr. John Mishra. He came down and met with Gaylin Mills, our early learning coordinator, and I for tours of our kinderbridge program. So he spent the entire morning here, and we went to Millplain and a couple of other schools that host our kinderbridge programs. Great information, great data provided by early learning coordinator Gaylin of the incredible positive impact that kinderbridge has on students as they enter kindergarten. And so that's great information there. I will provide the board more information this spring regarding that program and the impact it has for our students. I was able to tour Cascadia Technical Academy's new storefront for their fashion pathway. And this is part of our superintendent's administrative council that I'm part of with other Clark County superintendents and, and other superintendents that are part of that collaborative. So I particularly talked to a student named Anne Marie, and she is a Union High School student. She loves going to Union High School, but she loves going to Cascade in the morning. Actually, she goes straight to the site that's right next to the Safeway, just down the street from Cascade, Cascadia. And she has already been accepted into a fashion design school in New York. And so she's super excited for that, but she credits, she had a love of sewing as a young child, and credits this program for her success in getting into the fashion design school that she has set her heart on doing. So she's very excited over that. Had the opportunity to also meet Skill Center directors... Had the opportunity to also meet skill center directors, that was actually this morning, from the entire state of Washington. We hosted them over at Cascadia Tech as well and learning all the different pathways and things that they are doing to help students be able to access different career paths and go right into, be highly skilled when they come out of those skill centers and go into living wage jobs. Huge thank you to everyone who's able to attend the school funding and legislative engagement community meeting the other night. I want to do, make sure I do a special thank you to Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Jacobson for her presentation and the Executive Director of Communications, Craig Bernbach, and his team for the work that they've been doing, for all of the information for that. And they have set up another website, excuse me, a webpage specifically on legislative engagement and resources there. So if you get a chance, please check that out, it's a great resource. Our priorities for Evergreen Public Schools that the board has agreed upon are also on that page as well. Last week, I presented to Clark County School Advisory Council and I presented our legislative priorities and information about our upcoming levy. Through this event, I was able to connect a set right next to the vice chair of the Vancouver Neighborhood Association, and she's excited to share information regarding our levy with neighborhood associations. So that information will be getting out through those associations. We've had several legislators, including senators, reach out to gather input and expertise from not only myself, but other district administrators here at EPS. I want to say a huge thank you to the Director of Safety and Security, Shane Gardner, and Director of Maintenance and Operations, Marty Matarita, if I said the last name correctly. They gather information on school safety and to our Chief Financial Officer, Jennifer Jacobson, for helping bring understanding to the Senate Ways and Means Committee Chair and the attorney that works with that committee regarding K-12 finance and school levies. This is huge to be able to have practitioners who are experiencing school funding and the processes and policies are put in place by our legislatures, to be able to explain it and say, this is the impact and this is what's happening and this is what our needs are. And to be front and center with those senators is really impactful. So we're very thankful for that opportunity. I continue to reach out and focus on building relationships. So I was able to take time to go over in the evening and participate in the Native American Heritage Month Celebration. And a couple people in the audience out here too were part of that, I can, I recognize them. And was able to help paint part of a mural that will be displayed here at ASC. So as part of that, that process, I was able to meet an incredible storyteller. And this Native American Heritage Celebration was supported through our Diversity and Equity Inclusion Director, Jamila Singleton. And so she's good at pulling people together and putting these events on. I held another chat with Christine, and this is for staff, and this was at Sifton Elementary. I had around 50 staff or so. I did not count or do attendance, but it seemed to be about right if I was looking around at the different tables. And I also had my third coffee and conversation with Christine with parents. That took place. And this, and this morning, I was at Y East for the Hispanic Parent Group to engage in conversation with them and to hear their experiences. So busy morning this morning. Back on December 3rd, I took full advantage of being in front of all of the building and district administrators with the mid-year operations meeting. There are three a year, one at the beginning before school starts, one mid-year, and then one at the end of the year. And so I began with a welcome activity and a thing called Moody Me, and you'll learn a little bit more about that. I had a little teaser in our board information I sent out. Provided a preview, Jennifer Jacobson, and got up and, along with myself, about school funding and legislative engagement. Because not everybody would be able to come that Thursday night, so I thought it was very important for our administrators and our school teams to really know about that information so that they can help guide people there if there are questions, et cetera. Shared levy information and then a message from me about perspectives, about what perspectives we bring, what our frame is that we bring with us of who we are in two different situations and in two different conversations in the different spaces. Along also with revisiting my expectations regarding how we interact with others and what my expectations are for our system. And you've seen those about systems that serve, measure twice, cut once, all of those things. Let's see here. Okay. Tomorrow, I am spending the day mainly at Heritage High School. It just ended up that way in my calendar. So not only am I doing classroom visits, this is just one of my schools I'm popping into and spending an hour doing classroom visits, but I've also had the opportunity to present to the Teaching Academy class. So I will be doing that on my educational professional journey and that's lots of fun. I got the opportunity to do that at Mountain View a few weeks back and I think they might have talked to each other and said, you know, hey, she might be up to saying yes to coming out to your Teaching Academy class. So I'm very thrilled to have that opportunity. And then also, I'm scheduling out lunches at different schools and it just happens to be on the same day, I'm going to be at Heritage, hanging out at lunchtime, just talking to students. And that's what I do. I just go plop myself down at a table and sit and chat, introduce myself, and just see how things are going with, with students. So no agenda, nothing formal, I just move around from table to table. So that's what I'm doing tomorrow. I'm also practicing my skills on band conducting coming up. So Thursday morning, I know Gio's gonna be a little differently, he's like, what are you doing? So I will be learning how to conduct a band on Thursday morning so I can perform on Monday night at the band concert at Mountain View High School at 5:30. So, yes, wow is right, yes. So I'm hoping I'm gonna, you know, do that, do that right. If not, it'll be a lot of fun to watch anyway. All right, so it'd be a huge thank you to Mr. Ormson for that invite. Okay, so I mentioned systems that serve and the last superintendent's report that I gave back in November. And in particular, I want to draw attention back to, I think I did mention it last time, I've commissioned a third-party review of our special education services to analyze and provide recommendations regarding the following question. This is the overarching question for the review. Is the special education department using and managing operating systems in a manner that serves all stakeholders efficiently and effectively? So this is definitely about systems that serve. So I look forward to receiving the report and recommendations probably towards the end of February, I think is when I'll receive it. I don't have a hard date yet for that. Update on construction. So if you have been at ASC, you may have seen some plastic that's down, taped on the floor on some carpets and those type of things in different areas. And as a superintendent, obviously, I'm very, very interested in student achievement and I look forward to moving to my office to the third floor. And that is where our student achievement, our teaching, learning, equity leaders and, and staff are all housed. And so I'm excited to be able to be up there in the middle of all of that. So I'm looking forward to that. I know this was previously already planned, that at one point in time, the superintendent's office was going to be on the third floor and for a reason, it hadn't worked out yet. And so now, here we go, we're moving there to the third floor. My office space was originally designed for the district's safety and security team. Okay? And so it was wired for emergency operations, which includes wiring for communication and alternate power to function in the event of a large emergency. So I'm kind of in the way where my office is and where I'm at. And so it's really important that we have our safety and security team and our emergency operations team as well to have access to that space just readily and they are there and they have all the right, right infrastructure there to operate effectively in case there is a large emergency. And so that's another reason why I'm moving upstairs as well. At our last school board meeting, I shared with you that Dr. Heather Fowler is exploring the startup cost of an online program that we could offer here at EPS. Because one of the things that I had discussions with board members was, you know, what are we doing with our enrollment? We talked about boundary exceptions and we noticed that there was a huge number of students that were leaving to go to online schools that we did not offer here at EPS. So this, we're looking into this and this might encourage our, the large amount of students, at least a huge portion, we're hoping, to stay enrolled here in their home district, which is EPS, which is us. So I'm pleased to share that Dr. Fowler will be presenting her findings at a school board meeting in January. One idea she's already shared that would make a good use of the first floor, as you know, we have some empty space there, is we could actually house our online staff in that space. So we have space for online staff to work and to, and to provide education for students that would be participating in the online program. Okay, I'm almost done. So I'd like to end with sharing that I've been receiving some kind of the necessary emails from parents, so gifts, if you will. So I open my email and I get hundreds and hundreds of emails a day. And I wish they were all gifts like that, but not all the time. But every once in a while, these little gifts pop up. And so they are taking time out of their day or their evening and sending me just a description of their experience that their child had or with a teacher or a staff member, a para or a principal, right? And so just the other day, I got one specifically about one of our principals and then one another one is specifically about a teacher over at Fitchers Landing. And they just warm my heart and I just want to let you know that I do get some nice emails every once in a while and they're, they're nice gifts to open up. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Next item on the agenda is our student board representative report. Yes, Giovanni?
Ooh, okay. Good evening, Board of Directors and Dr. Maloney. I'm going to be here to talk about, mainly about WASDA. The WASDA conference we've had back in November around my, you know, birthday celebration kind of weekish. And I would honestly say, first year for WASDA for me and both, me and Neveah, it was, at first, we were both really nervous. It was like, oh, we're gonna meet a lot of people. But the first day, it was probably one of my most impactful experiences that I've had and really made me feel more fit for my role as we kind of both went in and just didn't expect what was gonna, gonna come. And so with this WASDA conference, we were able, the first day, we were in a pre-conference and it was very long, very, very long. But I, the thing I got out of from it is more on how to be myself more involved with our legislator, more involved in that area as I honestly, at first, did not know they existed. So with that, you know, pre-conference setup, it really brought me deeper in and really made me learn how does our legislative work? And then, you know, days going on by, we had breakout sessions. I, me and Neveah personally more attended more student voice, you know, focused sessions, more empowering student voices. I did go to some on, with, you know, Dr. Maloney on Native American work and how we can empower those students more. Some other breakout sessions, there were, actually, most of them, all of them were all student-related and we had wonderful speakers. Jay Lehman, if I'm getting it right, is, yeah, he was, I think, the director for ASWL, which is something, something, Washington Leaders, Student, Washington Leaders, something like that. He was amazing speaker. Most of the breakout sessions, he, I would say he's the only one that really brought me in. He used a lot of more up-to-date, in a way, sense to really draw in students and really, even directors, even staff, even board members, they got brought in really well since his way of presenting was really unique. A lot of his sessions I did attend since they were really, really good. And then on the last day, we had our speaker talk about AI and how that is incorporated now into schools. And I think a good reference he made was generations and how the district needs to learn how to adapt more with generations as we all have our own learning curve and our own learning mind and, you know, broadening that perspective. And then I would just say impactful experience, especially student representative dinner, that was really fun. At first, we both just walked in and were like, whoa, where do we sit? But we got invited by students into it and we called our table the omega table because we combined three tables into one big table. It was a very, very big group. We had Erin Jones come in and she did work with us and we made posters, we talked about what we are wanting to improve in our district and we as well get, gained a lot of ideas from how other districts that are even bigger than us work even smaller, since I heard some districts that are in a category I did not know existed. So, yeah, I would say that's what sums up me and Neveah's experience at WASDA, the conference.
Any questions? Thank you for your report.
Yeah. Questions, no?
Just the comment that, I know I was glad that you and Neveah were there and really pleased with the way that the other students took you in. It's a real testament to what I call the rising generation.
Yeah.
Helps me not to fear the future at all, you know?
Yeah.
I appreciate, I appreciate that and I appreciate you choosing to join us.
Yeah. Anymore?
I appreciate Giovanni getting to know you better there.
Oh, yeah. I loved getting to know all of you more, all your funny stories and crazy ones, too.
Thank you, Giovanni. Next item on the agenda is our 2023, 2024 financial statement end of year report. CFO Jennifer Jacobson is here to present.
Hi, good evening to the board and Superintendent Maloney. Tonight, I have a summary of the 2324 financial statement. So this is my annual report I do at the end of every year. We've closed the books out and we're, we'll start our audit in January of these books. So it's a quick-moving pace here, but I always start off with enrollment. Enrollment drives about 85% of our revenue. So this has a huge impact on our overall revenue. In 1617, we hit a high point of 26,482 students. Last year, we ended the year with 22,460. So it's about 4,000 student decline. That's about 15% over this time period. I think you've seen this, I feel like I show this, this a lot. So looking at the grade levels, this is where we budgeted and then this is where the actual FTE came in. So the big miss was on our kindergarten, trying to project what the kindergarten year was. Typically, we guess around 1,500 and it came in at 1,378. So we had a really low kindergarten year last year. This year, we're over that so far this year. We're approaching 1,400, so that's exciting. We're hoping to start swinging back in the other direction. And then you can see, we did see a big positive in the nine through 12 grade level and that, a lot of that increase is from Cascadia Tech Academy. They came in just, it was really awesome to see the amount of students, they got enrolled and as you have heard, they're expanding programs. We're hoping to not, we have hundreds of kids on wait lists, so we're looking to continue to expand that and serve more kids. So overall, it was about 177 FTE difference from what we budgeted. So very big picture, here's a three-year look at our fund balance and our revenue and expenditures. So in 2122, we had about 28.4 million in fund balance. In 2223, it dropped down a little bit to 28 million. And then in this current 2324 year, we were able to build up a little bit in our fund balance, up to 32 million. So if you remember back to the budget that we passed this summer, we were aiming for 33 million to end the year. We didn't quite hit the mark, we weren't quite conservative enough. A few expenses came through in the last couple months of the year we weren't anticipating. But we still ended the year strong and we have now additional funds to help us get through 2425. So to break down our fund balance, we have four fund balance categories that are restricted. And so these are legally required to be set aside in separate fund balance accounts for those purposes. So there's a CTE, LAP, a skills center, and a food service restriction. So any funds we bring in through those programs, the auditors look at every dollar that's spent out and if there's additional funds, we have to make sure they're kept aside in those restricted accounts. So when we ended the year, decided to put that 3.7 million that we were able to gain into a sign for enrollment stabilization fund. So that's just a short-term fund. We know it's going to be spent out in 2425. That's assigned through the superintendent, so it's something previous superintendent and I had decided to do. And this allowed us to keep that 5% in the bottom two categories to hit that 5% board policy. All right, I feel like I've talked about this revenue chart quite a few times in the last few months, so I'll go through it very briefly. The green is our state general purpose revenue. So for last year, that was about 55% of our total budget goes to all our basic ed needs. It's supposed to support everything from teachers, principals. It's supposed to support everything from teachers, principals, district staff. And then we have our special purpose funds, so the yellow and the gray. And those are specific to things like transportation, have to be spent in those areas. And then I want to point out ESER funds. So this was our last year. We had those special federal grant funds to help out. Those were about 3% of our funds last year. And levy revenue is about 13% last year. So you'll see us talk about in 24-25, it's actually 13.5% of our total resources. And that's because the ESER funds have gone away, and now the pie looks a little bit different. The other pieces pick up a little bit more of the total pie. So I do have two expenditure slides. The first one, we look at by object code. About 62% go to our certificated salary and benefits. So these are everything from our teachers to our certificated administrators and TOSSAs. We have 23% that go to classified staff, so our paraeducators, bus drivers, secretaries, et cetera. So those two together, about 85% of our budget goes directly to salaries and benefits for staff at the district. We have cut supplies down to just 3%, and this represents our building budgets, our curriculum, fuel. A lot of, you know, our technology hardware is included in supplies. And then 11% goes to total purchase services. And this is primarily insurance, utilities, our running start expenses go through this. So out of that 11%, I have a breakdown on the right side that shows how much of that is for our food services and custodial services. And the reason I show that is because those contracts are primarily staff. So we have contracts out for custodians at all of our schools and all of our food service staff, and that equals 4.6%. So we're spending almost 90% of our total budget. It's going towards staffing out in the schools. This is another way to break down the expenditure data. It's a way OSPI, it's included in their breakdown on their website. They put activities together. They group them by teaching and teaching support. So we have about 73% of our funds go directly into the classroom. School administration represents principals and their office staff and their expenditures. That's about 6.9%. Central admin, this is our superintendent, and all of the support here at ASC, that's about 4.8% of our total budget. And then other support activities are things like transportation, food services, our utilities, insurance, and that's 15% of the total. And lastly, I just have a brief summary of our other funds. We do have four other funds. Capital Projects Fund is responsible for all of the new buildings and the large building projects we have going on. This used to be, you know, $100, $200 million a year back when we're building these big schools. Now it's tapered down. We're just down to a couple projects left. The ending balance right now is $92.9 million. We're going to be finishing up transportation, our music additions. And then we do have capital renewal projects planned over the next, every summer. So whether it's new roofs on buildings or kitchen upgrades, things like that, we do have a plan in place for those funds. The Debt Service Fund, this is just to service the bonds that paid for the capital projects. So this is our principal and interest payments. So $33 million balance in that account. ASB Fund, so these are our student funds. They fundraise, they support clubs and sports and all those activities. They've been great. They've built up a $1.7 million fund balance. So they're doing a great job fundraising. And then lastly, our Transportation Vehicle Fund. This is only used to purchase buses. And so we receive money through bus depreciation from the state. And then we have, you know, go through a rotation of purchasing buses and replacing them when needed. So that is all I had to share for the year-end financial statements. Does anyone have questions or...?
Any questions?
Well, I know I asked questions earlier, so thank you for those answers.
Yeah, sure.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is an information item. Our financial statements for August, September, and October. These are informational items only, and no action is needed. Any questions or discussion or anything? Moving on, we have our Teaching and Learning and Equity Update with Dr. Brian Fox.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon and members of the Board. This evening, I have three items I'd like to share in our Teaching, Learning, and Equity Update, including choral programs, a community conversation, and learning labs. As a former middle school choir director, I really enjoyed hearing the students sing this evening. What a great way to start our evening meeting. Wanted to thank Mountain View High School Choir members and Director Kim Clausen for sharing their music this evening. The Mountain View Choir program is made up of five different choirs. It includes 123 students. This evening, we heard from a group called Mountain Express, which is an auditioned group that meets during fourth period. Mountain View and Evergreen Public Schools enjoy an excellent reputation for music instruction thanks to high-performing students and quality music instructors, plenty of administrative and parental and community support. I'm going to go off-script and just say that I imagine that you get used to such strong music programs, having come from other districts in the state and been involved. You can be assured that you have a very strong reputation for music in this district. During the 15 years I supervised fine and performing arts for another school district, I read and quoted many research findings which support music instruction in public schools. Recently, I focused my reading on research suggesting that singing is good for you and that singing with others may be even better. In addition to physical and mental health benefits, singing in a choir is proven to reduce stress, reduce stress hormones, and increase proteins that can boost your ability to fight serious illness. When facilitated well, choirs are large families. And one expert, Stanley Thurston, reports that singing in choir promotes social bonding, which contributes to a sense of belonging and joy, fosters trust, cooperation, and social cohesion, all good stuff. In EPS, you can see these facts here on this slide. We have 573 students enrolled in choir across five high schools, 524 middle schoolers across six schools. And in 4th and 5th grade, we have 688 students who participated in the Fall Choral Festivals, which I know some of you attended. This means we have almost 1,800 students benefiting from singing in choir. In Washington State, the arts includes dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts. And EPS offers courses in many of these disciplines. The EPS Arts Department operates within Teaching and Learning and Equity under the direction of Tilly Meyer, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And I would like to thank Corinne Ormsen, Fine and Performing Arts and PE Specialist, for the many ways she supports students and teachers in the arts and also in physical education, and playing the piano for Mountain Express this evening. Thank you, Corinne, for arranging this evening's music performance. Next, one of the foundations of the EPS Strategic Plan is to engage, listen, and value input from our community. I'm pleased to report that TLE Leadership recently held a community conversation with a focus on increasing inclusion and belonging for youth with disabilities. Hosted by Senior Director of Special Services, Ellen Weisner, and facilitated by Director of Student Equity and Family Engagement, Jamila Singleton, and Diana Avalos, Executive Director of Latino Leadership Northwest, the event on November 20th drew an audience of more than 40 to participate in a very structured conversation designed to gather ideas and feedback from participants. After hearing a presentation on inclusive practices, participants broke up into smaller table groups for conversation facilitated by EPS parents and community members who guided conversation and took notes. You can see on this slide, goals of the community conversation included exploring why inclusion matters, building a shared understanding of what inclusion means to our community, sharing about inclusive practices work that is happening in our district, and generating ideas for eliminating barriers to inclusion. Feedback and commentary gathered at this event is being organized and themed and will be shared with the planning team, participants of the event, leaders in the Special Services Department, and also with the Special Education Advisory Committee. And this will certainly provide them with useful data to inform decision-making. And lastly, one of our primary goals in TLE is to provide engaging and relevant professional development for Evergreen teachers. TOSSAs in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, building instructional coaches, and school administrators are partnering to provide several opportunities for teachers to come together across all six middle schools in something we call learning labs. Covington Middle School Principal Lynette Sunstrom invited me to a learning lab for English teachers she facilitated with Michael Espinoza last Thursday. I spent four hours with teachers, administrators, and 8th grade students using a carefully-designed protocol for observing students in a classroom and then sharing thoughts. A learning lab is a structure for supporting groups of educators to grow their craft in collaboration with one another inside the school day. During a learning lab, teachers come together to watch students in action and then have conversations about what they saw. First, a host teacher is identified and welcomes colleagues to come see what they're working on in their classroom. The host teacher has an invitational stance. They welcome colleagues to observe in their classroom, but they don't suggest that they're doing everything right. There is a vulnerability to this experience, and we're pleased to have excellent teachers opening their doors for learning labs. Observing teachers from around the district are provided with a substitute teacher. And as a result, they get the chance to visit the host teacher's classroom and participate in the learning lab. The goal is about teacher learning and reflection, but really, the ultimate goal is to improve the way we engage learners as critical thinkers for our 180 days of learning. This fall, there have been 17 learning labs at the middle school in English Language Arts, Language Arts, Mathematics, and Social Studies classrooms. Quote, "It's a joyful, energy-giving experience to gather together as teachers to think about student learning," end quote, says learning design specialist Carrie Fansler, who's a leader in this effort. Supporting EPS teachers through professional development opportunities is a huge focus in TLE. And this highlight of learning labs at the middle schools barely scratches the surface of the work being done. So I'm happy to say that in January, Executive Director of Instruction and Leadership Bobby Height will be sharing more with you in a school board presentation on this topic. So tonight, we celebrated 1,800 singers, meaningful engagement of parents and community members and teachers who come together for relevant and productive professional development opportunities in learning labs. And in January, Bobby Height will share more on instruction and learning. And as noted earlier, Dr. Heather Fowler will make some presentations in January, including results from our first-ever interim assessment. And that data is coming together. The interim assessment was recently completed this fall. So things to look forward to in January. This concludes the TLE update. Do you have any questions or comments? Great. Thanks for your time this evening.
Our next item is Matters Reserved for Board Action. Dr. Maloney is COO. Jennifer, Janay Gomes here?
Yes. Go ahead and come on up, our Chief Operations Officer, Janay Gomes.
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for having me. I had shared our district calendar in workshop, and tonight is first reading. The... Do we have the graphs at all, Lori? Oh, that's okay. We had the two options that I had shared with you, option A and B. And staff had selected option B. There was about 1,517 responses to the calendar. And I think in some of the documents shared with you, you have those results. And if not, I can send them to you separately. But option B is what was selected. And you can see the first day of school would be August 26th. Last day of school, if you could scroll down. Thank you. June 11th. One of the differences on this calendar is Monday in November. The Monday, November 10th was selected to not have school with Veterans Day being on Tuesday. And that adjusted some of the snow days. I had worked with all of our surrounding school districts to do our best to align spring break. And we primarily do that for sports and with CTA, because we have a lot of students from other districts that come to that school. Some school districts have not finalized their calendars, others have. We selected the April 6th, because a couple districts had already gotten board approval. So we aligned with that. But everybody is aware of what all of the spring break is. Professional development, last time we bargained, we moved one of those days into January. So you'll just see four before school starts, along with special services and the new teacher orientation. And one of our changes is a professional development in October. And if I could invite Bobby Height, Executive Director of Supervision and Instruction, up to talk about that.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon and Board of Directors. Typically, our October In-service Day is the second Friday of the month. That was based on the state In-service Day that was aligned across the state. However, that has gone away. And so we have taken the opportunity to push that day out to October 31st. It's an interesting date to consider, as it is a Halloween on Friday. And so we thought we would take an opportunity to offer Professional Development Day on October 31st and give it a trial run. And then once we do that, as Janay said, we'll seek input as we look to the following year to see if it's worthy of entertaining a Professional Development Day around the Halloween season. And then additionally, as you look at this district calendar, it is a high-level calendar. It does not break out elementary, middle school, or high school. So once the district calendar is approved, then myself and Janay and our team will look at early release schedules that occur on Wednesdays or Fridays with report cards, progress report days. And also then begin thinking about when those occur, when trimesters end, when semesters end, and looking at those days more critically. So hopefully, we can get those published as well, so families can start planning around those days. But those are not on this calendar yet. That comes next.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions about any of that?
So there's a January 23 semester break on this calendar. Will that drive when the semesters actually split?
Yeah, at the bottom, if you could scroll down. We put some notes down there, just to try to help initially before we publish. And it talks about January 22nd being the last day, and then the first day will be January 27th.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So action will require, to move this to second reading, will require a motion.
I approve the 20-
I approve the 2025-2026 school calendar to second approval. Second reading.
Seconded. Seconded.
That's a mouthful.
Director Gronewald moved to approve the 2025-2026 school calendar and move forward for a second reading and approval. Director Bookenegre seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda, here comes Craig, is our good news report.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon, Board of Directors, and Superintendent Maloney. Thank you, as always, for having the opportunity to share with you the good news. And there it is. I'm going to start today by talking about the slide right here that we just usually use, a good picture. But this was at Burton Elementary School. Every month, they do a student recognition, and I just thought this picture of just how proud that student was to grab that award. That's a class award, not just for him. I believe, if I remember correctly, it was for lining up quickly, but he was just so proud to show that award off. Dr. Maloney stole a little bit of my thunder in her superintendent report. We have some repetition that I can go through quickly. We did host the school funding and legislative engagement meeting, which had good attendance. Board members were there. Thank you to Paul Harris, who is the now Senate-elect. Representative Monica Stoner was unable to attend, but she did help in the planning. My fingers will work. And Dr. Maloney talked about going to another teaching academy class. We did have some pictures from her appearance at Mountain View where the students were very prepared with some tough questions, everything from curriculum to Dr. Maloney's background and even budget. The Native American Heritage Celebration that Dr. Maloney talked about was at Y East Middle School. This, of course, was in November, which was Native American Heritage Month. There was renowned storyteller Ed Edmo, who was there to present some wonderful stories. There was also authentic art, and the food was catered by Indigenous Unity R. Tool. There's a video story this week that we put out about the puzzle clubs here in Evergreen Public Schools. This is a district initiative that had just started this year. It does work in coordination with our high-cap programs, but students at 15 elementary schools able to join the puzzle clubs. And the line that's in there is that they're puzzling as fast as they can because, as I've learned a lot lately, that there is more to just the casual puzzling. This is competitive puzzling. So they don't only learn here how to put together a puzzle and have fun, they're learning strategies and how to do it as quickly as possible. This will all culminate in a Super Bowl-type event. All 15 schools will compete at Y East Middle School on December 18th. What I learned from the students, not just that they're having a lot of fun, we went to orchards, but that they're learning without knowing they're learning. So they're doing things, problem-solving, obviously, teamwork, there's math. And then something that the teacher pointed out is they're also learning that it's okay to not be perfect. Trial and error is how you get a puzzle done. So you have to fail to succeed. And also, it was mentioned that it is fun away from screens, which I think teachers and parents really enjoy. Riverview and Union High School, this is another awesome representation of students in our district supporting other districts. Union High School students are going to Riverview every Thursday, and they are partnering with third graders where they present math games to them. So they're teaching and mentoring. And it is, again, one of those situations where you're not sure who's getting the most out of it. The young kids or the older kids, they're all having a great time. And this is a program that is really impacting especially those third graders to, as they say, to learn from the big kids. Chartwell sponsored a baking contest. The best high school bakers in our district gathered at Heritage High School for a delicious and beautiful time. And finally, I want to mention Silver Star Elementary and Riverview Elementary School. They were selected, classes at each one of these schools were selected to make ornaments for the governor's holiday tree. So EPS had two schools selected. There were only 16 schools selected in the entire state to take part in this. So they created wonderful ornaments that I believe are already up on the tree right now. And that is my good news report. If there are any questions?
Any questions?
Do we know what time the puzzle event is at Y East?
I do. I can get it to you. I want to say it's, I don't want to say because there's a microphone and I could be wrong, but I have it.
Perfect, thank you.
There you go. I thought it was 6:00 to 7:00 or 6 o'clock, but then I was like, maybe it was 5:30. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is board comments. Anyone have some comments?
I'm trying to remember. We've covered a lot with the superintendent's report. I had an opportunity with Director Superintendent Maloney to attend the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Outlook. I tried to take some notes, and it turned out that my device wasn't responding well enough to keep the notes. But if you've been to these events before, this time, there was Annette Cleveland from the 49th, Paul Harris from the 17th, both senators, and then two, you remember Stephanie McClintock from the Battleground Board, she was there, and Ed Orcut, John Brown, and Peter Urbano? That's right. So a lot of representation from the 20th, from the 18th Republicans. And they had a pretty robust discussion about the conditions that the legislature faces as it develops the next biennial budget, which is not, right now, the outlook isn't terribly rosy. And I was in meetings during the WASDA conference where a senator really discouraged us from asking for the moon when we come and advocate. I'm not sure that we should change, I'm not sure that we should change our priorities based on that, but I know that Senator-elect Harris has higher hopes since I had a conversation with him after the legislative community meeting, which I think, weren't we all there? Some of us weren't there, but that was really useful, I think, for, I took the opportunity to connect Senator-elect Harris with some of our parents who've been very active and get a relationship started there that I think will be fruitful. Senator-elect Harris thought that there would be additional money for schools. And so we'll just have to see as we go into it. But I think with our priorities set up, and I want to express great appreciation for Janee, for the way that you led that and helped us get through to a set of priorities. They're basically aligned, if not prioritized exactly the same with WASA, with WASDA, with all of the groups. We have another year where the perception of the need is pretty much uniform and an opportunity to speak as one voice. At the WASDA conference, I was asked, as I'd done in years past, to take some statewide data and make a dashboard or a little website for folks to use in advocacy. And that will dovetail with our efforts to get information out about the levy to complement COO, no CFO, Jennifer Jacobson's work on this, and Craig's. Craig, I can't remember your last name. Burnbach. Craig Burnbach's work is setting up the flyers and things for the informational piece of this. And so we'll be going for that and trying to get some synergistic advocacy and hope to involve some students as well. Beyond that, I'm grateful to you, President Weatherspoon, for our year, when I was, our year just finished when, as the vice president, I think you kept me on task. I think you, we had a lot to do, and a couple of people have said to us that it was a lot of work that neither of us had anticipated coming into the beginning of the last year. And thanks to that, I feel like you and I together were able to accomplish a lot that might not have been, and kind of keep the stress out of it as much as possible. And I appreciate the way the board responded to the efforts to get all that work done. Thank you all. It's been a good year for me. It hasn't been without controversy or heartbreak because of the budget cuts, but we did all right. We did all right. That's all I had.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for their public comments tonight. And Dr. Strong doesn't appear to be here, but I didn't catch the name of her organization when she came up, but I'd like to learn more. And also, you know, we don't want to be complacent. There's always room for improvement with our hiring practices, with retainment. And also, I'd still want to ask that we might, on a board workshop, discuss the supplemental contract that was given to the district bargaining team members. I believe the community would like to, you know, just hear us discuss that and see where we want to go moving forward with that. So, thank you.
I just want to say that, Rob, thank you for your year of service as president. It was actually fun to work with you, and I learned a lot. We did do a lot of work, and I think I'm proud of a lot of the work that we did do. I will say that I will slow down, and you always help me slow down, so I appreciate that. And so we'll stay sitting next to each other so we can get through this next year. I also want to say that I did not get to go to WASDA this year because I was actually too sick to go. And I've enjoyed hearing from everybody so far, just what their experiences were. It's a really great conference. We learn a lot, and I really feel like I missed out on a lot by not being able to go. Does anyone else have any further comments? The time is 7:16, and we're going to go into a recess to sign documents followed by a workshop. Our board workshop tonight will be about our draft cell phone policy and procedure. We're going to continue our book study, and we will do some board protocols and calendaring. Thank you.[1774.27][1774.27][music]